All right, well, welcome, everybody, to our December 13th, 2016 Board meeting. And we're going to call the meeting order and stand for the pledge. And Brian back there, why don't you lead the pledge?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, you have any announcements you want to make now?
I'd like to make one. I'd like to recognize and welcome Mr. Clyde Clapp to our board.
Thank you. I would join in that welcoming.
You got your work cut out for you, but congratulations. So now we're going to move on to recognitions and acknowledgements, starting with number one. We're going to turn it over to Mike Olivera.
So, item one is from the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation recognizing high schools, local high school students for attending the American Legion's Boys and Girls State.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm going to go down in the foyer there and make the presentations. If I could ask all my people to join me up here. I'll find you in a minute.
It's at the top, second line.
Adine Gonzalez, isn't that her here? Angel Alvarez. Emma Lysen, is that correct? Hi, Emma, how are you? Eduardo Lima, Lima? Let's be school today. Hunter? Bruce? I just want to make sure Mom is ready. Ivan Ramos. Grayson Leo. Sarah Toromius. And Mike Postafa. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here and I'm very proud to present the proclamation regarding and recognizing these fine young men and women for attending the American Legion Boys and Girls State Program. I think you're missing one. Matthew Burns?
Matthew Burns.
If Matthew Burns is here, come on up. We'll have to make sure we get our certificates right. Matthew, I don't seem to have anyone, but we'll get that for you.
Matthew, what school do you go to? Okay, I'll make sure you get one.
Sound okay?
Great. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, recognizing these fine young men and women for the American Legion of Boys and Girls State Program, whereas the American Legion believes that there is no better way to assure the survival of our democratic society and state other than to train our young people in the ideals and objectives of the American government. And whereas the American Legion Boys and Girls State Program is among the most respected and selected educational programs of civics instruction for juniors in high school. And whereas during a week-long program, Calaveras County's young citizens learn how to city, county, and state governments run and their function by actually doing the job themselves. And whereas the Boys and Girls State Program focuses on participation and personal experience as a model state, complete with governing bodies and elected public officials, future public officials, designed to mirror the structure and operation of the state of California. And whereas the Boys and Girls State Program encourages participants to identify with democratic beliefs, organize campaigns, seek elective office, write legislation, debate judicial arguments, utilize peremptory procedures, and become effective community leaders. And whereas for 78 years after the first induction in 1937, the Boys and Girls State Program continues to demonstrate its excellence in teaching students the importance of our American way of life. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, hereby recognizes all these young men and women for attending the American Legion Boys and Girls State Program. I would like to have a motion, please.
Public comment?
Oh, we don't need a motion?
No, first, public comment.
Public comment, I'm sorry, public comment? Now, may I have a motion, please?
With honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion here?
Carries. Ladies and gentlemen, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, on this 13th day of December, 2016. Let's go through this again. Okay. I would like to have you folks stand right up there. Ladies and gentlemen, these are our missing young men and women. You guys play golf, don't you? We'll start this again. Adine, is Adine here? Angel Alvarez, I'll come to you, sir. Eduardo? Hunter, you got two yet? And Ivan? And Grayson? Hi, Grayson. And McCall? And Sir Wright? And Michael? Welcome. I want to make sure we get all your folks shaking hands, future voters. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I want to present these boys and girls, these young men and women from the American Legion Boys and Girls. One more hand.
Okay, are you going to read from there for this next one?
The next one.
You got next here.
So, item two is from the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation recognizing Brian Huckinon, Battalion Chief of Ebbets Pass Fire District for 34 years of distinguished service.
And I use your hands.
Scout.
I'm sorry.
Scout.
I don't know where to put them. Hi, this is a...
Scout.
With a L.A. on it. That's okay. I have a note for that. She'll take this. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a great honor and pride that I'm able to make this presentation, next because he's Ebbets Pass Fire in my district and I share a special relationship with all public safety, peace officers, firemen, paramedics, nurses, and doctors. Once again, Board of Supervisors, proclamation regarding recognizing Brian Huckinon, 34 years of service to the residents of Calaveras County as a member of the Ebbets Pass Fire District, standing with Brian as Chief Mike Johnson of Ebbets Pass Fire. Whereas, Board of Supervisors is pleased to honor and recognize members of the community that contribute to the well-being of their community. And whereas, Brian Huckinon served the Ebbets Pass Fire District for 34 years in the capacity of firefighter, engineer, captain, and battalion chief. And whereas, Brian Huckinon has not only performed his usual challenging duties as battalion chief, but has gone above and beyond to ensure the staff, under his supervision, always had the necessary tools to meet the mission of the district. And whereas, battalion chief Huckinon managed various components of the district, from vehicle and hybrid maintenance to the C platoon. And whereas, battalion chief Huckinon's intricate knowledge of the Highway Department has helped to ensure swift response to the many emergencies and life-threatening situations. And whereas, battalion chief Huckinon's experienced knowledge assisted his fellow firefighters when faced with overwhelming challenges related to the Old Gulch Fire, the Darby Fire, and most recently, the Duke Fire. Now, let it be resolved that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognized Brian Huckinon for his dedication to the residents and visitors of the Highway Department corridor during his 34 years of service and commend him on a remarkable career. Do I have a public comment? Public comment? Chief Johnson, you want to say a couple words?
Yeah, real quickly if I could.
We have all the time in the world, as long as it's two minutes.
Brian Huckinon is much too humble a man to, you know, go on about his own praises of good work, but I can assure you, as being a fire chief and have had Brian work directly for me since I came here to Ebbets Pass Fire District, a true blessing to our community and the visitors that come to Ebbets Pass whenever Brian was serving in that public serving capacity. There were many times where he would spend 1:00, 2:00 a.m. in the morning out there making sure that the fleet was ready to go to make that next call from whatever we had a fleet maintenance issue amongst all the other operational supervision leadership that he did as well. Brian, once again, congratulations. What a great job, sir.
Just a quick note, I have personal experience with Brian, working as a deputy in this county. I don't know if you remember, but I recall several calls, he was a go-to guy. Some of those calls ended up very tragically, but he maintained the control of the scene and took care of the things that had to be done. For that, I thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Well, I am very proud to serve the community and so now it's time to move on. My wife has sacrificed a lot of time for me to be as dedicated as I was to the Ebbets Pass Fire District, so now it's time to spend time with them. Merry Christmas to all.
So, probably a public comment first?
We did.
We did a public comment, okay.
Yeah, but we don't have a motion.
We do need a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
Item three is from the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation recognizing Lieutenant Dwayne Lewis and Sergeant Richard Davis for their years of distinguished service as part of the California Highway Patrol.
Sergeant, you can bring up your new boss. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to present Lieutenant John Warren. He is your new commander for the San Andreas CHB Office. Once again, part of the family, you never get rid of the good and bad, as family is sometimes, but I'm very proud to say that I am a member of the whole office, the family one time, and I'll always be there every and every time. This proclamation recognizes Richard B. Davis, 32 years of service as a member of the California Highway Patrol. Whereas, Board of Supervisors is pleased to honor and recognize members of the community that contribute to the well-being of their community. Whereas, Richard Davis entered the California Highway Patrol Academy on October 29th, 1984, and graduated on March 15th of 1985. And whereas Officer Davis served in various areas of California, including central Los Angeles, South Sacramento, Santa Rosa, Sacramento, and San Andreas. And whereas Sergeant Davis was assigned to many divisions within the organization from road patrol, field training officer, impaired driver's task force member, you know what that is, guys, and officer safety instructor and drug recognition expert, to name a few. And whereas Officer Davis, Sergeant Davis, list of accomplishments include field training officer, weapons in range instructor, drug recognition expert, project manager of the simulation study program, development of the Department of Current Advanced Officer Safety Training Programs, Valley Division Special Response Team, and lastly, the senior sergeant in charge of the logistics team. And now, be it resolved that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognize Sergeant Richard B. Davis for his dedication to the residents and visitors of California during his 32 years of service and commend him on a remarkable career.
I found out just about a month ago that I was selected for the command, and in this last month, I've worked with Lieutenant Lewis and Richard Davis, and I have to say, I'm really impressed with the command they put together and a lot of the work that they've all done, so I congratulate him on a career retirement officer, so I look forward to working in San Andreas, Calaveras. Thank you.
Sergeant?
Been here about, in the county, about a short seven years. Lieutenant, although he's not here today, he's here about four or five years. Been a wonderful candidate. You've heard, been around the state quite a bit. I've been to the frying pan quite a bit, job my entire career, but coming here and relaxing in your county has been really quite a good ending to a very long and happy career. So, again, I thank you and having you this much today.
Any last public comment? Mr. Chair, I put in a can of motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
Thank you. Sergeant? Get the golf club ready. And while we're here, I'd like to make a presentation in mentioning only because we're going to be able to present this to Lieutenant Lewis personally at another function that's going to happen. So, we have that proclamation recognizing Dwayne Lewis, 29 years of service as a member of California Highway Patrol. Whereas, Board of Supervisors is pleased to honor and recognize members of the community that contribute to the well-being of their community. And whereas, Dwayne Lewis entered the California Highway Patrol Academy in June 1987 and graduated on November 12th of 1987. And whereas Officer Lewis served in the various areas of California, including Santa Barbara, Indio, Los Manos, Napa, Woodland, Contra Costa, South Sacramento, and San Andreas. And whereas Officer Lewis, Lieutenant Lewis, I'm sorry, was assigned to many divisions within the organization from training development, emergency notification tactical alert center, internal affairs, and the academy. And whereas Lieutenant Lewis's list of accomplishments includes field training officer, motorcycle officer, I like that, commercial operator narcotics enforcement team, instructor for various programs and topics, and lastly, as a commander in San Andreas. And now, be it resolved that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes Lieutenant Dwayne Lewis for his dedication to the residents and visitors of California during his 29 years of service and commend him on a remarkable career. We have public comment?
You don't need a motion. No, no, it was part of the motion you already did.
Oh, you already did?
Yes.
Okay, you already had a motion.
I have to call IT, I'm sorry.
It's just the...
Item four is from the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation recognizing Supervisor Cliff Edson's term as the representative of District One.
So I have the honor this morning to recognize Cliff Edson, who served in District One. Cliff is not able to be here today due to health reasons, but we do want to take this opportunity to recognize his time served on the Board of Supervisors. This is a proclamation recognizing Cliff Edson's years of service and commitment to the residents of Calaveras County. Whereas Cliff Edson was elected to serve the residents of Calaveras County in 2012 as a representative of District One, and whereas Cliff has been involved in many issues within his district and the county, serving on many boards such as CE, PPA, CCOG, and the Regional Council of Rural Counties, always addressing the concerns of his constituents to the best of his ability. And whereas Cliff worked hard to be easily accessible to his constituents, oftentimes fixing them breakfast or just providing a comfortable place to discuss any issues. And whereas, his dedication during the Duke Fire was illustrated by his efforts to assist those affected by the disaster and help them navigate through the county, state, and federal processes. And whereas during board meetings, Cliff always started the meeting with a cheerful "Good morning" and encouraged those present to respond as such. And whereas Cliff has shown himself to be a caring and thoughtful person who has dedicated much of his life ensuring that his community grew and prospered. Now be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes Cliff Edson for his commitment to the county and its residents during his term as county supervisor. Is there any public comment? I would just like to say, as a county supervisor serving with Cliff, that he truly is dedicated to bringing out the best of Calaveras County and striving for that. Oftentimes, we had our disagreements, but bottom line, we always had a mutual respect for each other, our ideas and opinions.
Call for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this 13th day of December, 2016. Item five is from the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation recognizing Supervisor Debbie Ponte's term as the representative of District Four.
All right, Debbie, well, it's been four quick years. We came in together and we're going out together, so it's been a true honor. I think we did, you know, as best we could give him the service, and you did an amazing job. It really was an honor to sit on the Board of Supervisors for the last four years. So, I'm lucky enough to read this great proclamation here. So, proclamation recognizing Debbie Ponte's years of service and commitment to the residents of Calaveras County. Whereas Debbie Ponte was elected to serve the residents of Calaveras County in 2012, that really wasn't like four years ago, as a representative of District Four. And whereas Debbie has been involved in many issues within our district and county, serving on many boards such as Fish and Game Commission, the IHSS Advisory Committee, Central Sierra Child Support, Mountain Valley EMS, and SeaCoast, and is always the first to champion a cause, no matter how difficult the situation may be. And whereas Debbie's intricate knowledge of the issues affecting her district has helped many of her constituents, whether it be regarding road maintenance or cannabis cultivation. And whereas her unfaltering dedication during the Duke Fire was illustrated by her tireless efforts to pitch in wherever needed, take action instead of talking, and perform the dirty or unsung task of continually proving her love of the community. And whereas, when Debbie served as chair in 2014, she always epitomized grace and professionalism, ensuring that all provided an opportunity to speak on the matters at hand, and whereas Debbie has always taken the time to support the residents of the county as a whole with great compassion and empathy, oftentimes sharing a hug or a tear, but most importantly, her heart. Now be proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes Debbie Ponte for her unwavering spirit and dedication during her term as county supervisor.
Anyone like to come up and say a few words? Sheriff Devasilio, good morning, Board, Ms. Pawnee. Something a lot of people don't know, Ms. Pawnee and I had a private conversation here about a month ago, and I made a comment to her that she didn't care about her county. That's not the way it was meant, there was other factors involved, and I want to apologize to you, Ms. Pawnee, because I know that you absolutely care about this county.
I've been watching the Board of Supervisors for almost 10 years, and I would like to comment on the method in which you chaired this committee. Two years ago, I saw fairness, I saw professionalism, I saw you step back and allow others to express themselves as they needed, and I just want to tell you, I appreciate the way that you handled your position, and we're going to miss you. Thanks, Debbie.
Okay, let's tell me.
Okay, this is Thomas Chesky-Moakil, also Executive Director of the Calaveras Cannabis Alliance. When I started my work in the cannabis industry and advocating for it, really, in the beginning, what it was, is it wasn't about industry at all, it was about people, it was about farmers being seen as citizens and as humans. And it was so hard because it was such an expenditure of political capital for anyone to talk to us, we couldn't get anyone to talk to us because it was such a risk, there was such criticism, there's so much blowback when someone did that. And the thing that I want to thank you for the most is having the guts to come out and see for yourself who we are and what we are, and give us a chance to be seen as citizens. And it means so much, not just to me, but to our whole community. And on behalf of both myself and our community, I want to say, thank you, we'll never forget for that chance.
Marty Crane, so just in case you thought no one noticed, Debbie, I just wanted to say ditto to all of this, but also, oh, there's so much I had in my head. I want, I want you to know that from this viewpoint out here, it was clear to see that you were always prepared, you had always studied up. And I won't reiterate what everyone else said, but that's big. And so, thank you so much, and thank you for your work with the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee. It takes diligence to stay the course and help fix things that need support. And, and one other thing that Supervisor Calloway said many years ago was that, as a supervisor, we're not, we're here to make all the decisions, not just the easy ones. So thank you for that. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Chair?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just want to have a cut, I just want to say a few words of thank you. Thank you certainly to the community who elected me back in 2012. I appreciate the vote of confidence, I appreciated working for you and with you. We didn't always agree to things, we weren't always to be favorable perhaps in what you needed or wanted, but certainly gave it my all to make it, to make it a better place. This job is not easy, as those who have served in the past and those who are serving now and into the future. But it is a lot easier when working with the county staff here. And there are many wonderful people within county government. And I thoroughly enjoy working with each and every department and department head, oftentimes not agreeing, trying to find solutions, compromise. And I have the utmost respect for the county staff and the county departments, and most importantly, our leader Shirley. Without county administration and making his county council, provided a lot of guidance, a lot of resources, never, ever, never, ever said you should do this or do that, always provided good information, always gave additional resources to go find out for yourself, and truly appreciate that. And we're going to miss Shirley as our county administrator, and I just want to thank you for your dedication to Calaveras County.
Item six is from the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation recognizing Supervisor Chris Wright's term as the representative of District Two.
Now it's my turn. Chris and I, like he mentioned, started four years ago in 2012, and it's been a pleasure working with Chris. And again, oftentimes not always maybe agreeing, but again, a mutual respect that we have for each other and for the constituents we serve and for his work on the board. So this is a proclamation recognizing Chris Wright's years of service and commitment to the residents of Calaveras County. Whereas Chris Wright was elected to serve the residents of Calaveras County in 2012 as a representative of District Two. And whereas Chris has been involved in many issues within his district and the county, serving on many boards such as Children and Families First Committee, Mental Health Board, Motherville Job Training, and the Pre-Mortality Task Force, always addressing the concerns of his constituents to the best of his ability. And whereas Chris forms lasting relationships with the residents of his district, always looking out for their best interests. And whereas his unfaltering dedication during the Butte Fire was illustrated by his efforts to assist those affected by the disaster. And whereas during board meetings, Chris always listened to the comments of staff and the public and based his decisions on the facts presented. And now it be proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes Chris Wright for his steadfast dedication and positive outlook during his term as county supervisor. Are there any public comments?
Good morning, Terry Lane, First Five Calaveras. And today I have our team here, Robin Davis, Joyce Peak, Amy Eves, and we'd like to say thank you Supervisor Chris Wright for all you've done to support children in Calaveras and for being part of our commission. You will be sorely missed, it's been a pleasure to work with you. And we have two little items for you. One is this official document, and I will read it for you. Certificate of Appreciation Presented to Supervisor Chris Wright. In recognition of his contribution to the health and well-being of Calaveras County's youngest citizens through his role as Commissioner for the First Five Calaveras Commission, January 2013 through December 2016. Thank you, Chris. And then, we ask the staff and the commissioners from First Five to think of words that describe Supervisor Wright. They're all good, they're all good, Chris. And I'm going to read what those words are. Chris, advocate, enjoyable, protector, inquiring, resourceful, personable, humorous, knowledgeable, community-minded, compassionate, champion, witty, open-minded, sharp, supportive, integrity, warm-hearted, and authentic. So thank you Supervisor Wright for what you've done.
Thank you, thank you so much. You guys are great, First Five does a wonderful job, and so hopefully, the board member that replaces me will do even a better job of working with you guys. Thank you.
I just can't let this go by. Chris, I just want to say that having been here and witnessed all these meetings and many others, I love that you were low-key, under the radar, but when you needed to be a warrior for your people, you were there. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Also, Chris, I'd like to acknowledge the lack of opportunity you had to show leadership on this committee. I'm still burning from your inability to serve as Chair, but I know that you would be as good as any of them and probably better than most, so thank you.
So I wanted to bring up some specific, during the Butte Fire, there was a lot of conflicting information flying around, and our community was kind of desperate for good information, and I called you, and I asked if you would help me get that information to our people. You answered the phone every time for two weeks, in the middle of God knows how much craziness was going on for everyone. And if nothing else, I want you to know that that made a difference. It helped us get services to people we need, helped them get out of the way of something that was coming, and it saved property, and who else, who knows what else? And that was you. Thank you very much.
I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a move by Supervisor Olivera, second by Supervisor Clapp, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this 13th day of December 2016.
Item seven is from the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation recognizing Steve Kearney's two years as the supervisor representing District Five.
Thank you, Diane. So I'm here with honor and pleasure to be able to recognize Steve Kearney for his tenure on the Board of Supervisors. This is a proclamation recognizing Steve Kearney's years of service and commitment to the residents of Calaveras County. Steve Kearney was elected to serve the residents of Calaveras County in 2014 as a representative of District Five. And whereas Steve has been involved in many issues within his district and the county, serving on many boards such as Area 12 Agency on Aging, the Debt Advisory Committee, Heartwood Advisory Committee, and the Solid Waste Task Force, always addressing the concerns of his constituents to the best of his ability. And whereas Steve attended the meetings of the Commission on Aging in an effort to assist them with reaching the senior population of this county. And whereas although his district was not directly affected by the Butte Fire, he coordinated efforts to collect donations of items and water for distribution to those in need. And whereas Steve always treated people in a friendly manner and openly admitted when he was not an expert on a certain matter. Now it be proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes Steve Kearney for his commitment to the county and its residents during the tenure as county supervisor. Any public comment?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, I had the distinct honor and pleasure to serve as a member of this board with every single individual we are honoring here right now. And we faced in two short years what counties never even come close to facing. And it wasn't small things, it was one after another, ongoing, which will be ongoing for a long, long time. But these Board of Supervisor members, Supervisor Ponte, Supervisor Wright, Supervisor Kearney, and Supervisor Edson, was the hardest-working Board of Supervisors I have ever seen, and I'm sure that I would have backup when people are experiencing what we had to go through. I want to personally thank them for their service, and I hope I can gain the experience and the wisdom to continue on and take the new board to where we have to be and beyond. But we can't forget what we did in the past, and that's because of these lady and gentleman. A hand for them, please.
Is there a motion? Did I hear your motion?
I did.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Supervisor Olivera, second by Supervisor Wright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, farrow, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this 13th day of December 2016. Thank you.
Item eight is from the Administrative Office for proclamation recognizing Shirley E. Ryan for 26 years of outstanding service to Calaveras County.
All right, well, I think that noting that she has served for 26 years, I'm getting off a lot easier than Shirley here. But, you know, this last four years has been really a pleasure just to work with Shirley on all kinds of different issues. And the thing about it is, we agree on a lot of things, but, but some of them, especially when it comes to spending money, she's very tight, and I am not that way. So it's good for the benefit of the county, I think, that she was here, instead of just having me there, because we'd probably be broke by now. So she's done a really tremendous job, and it's, it's really hard, you know, when supervisors, not just me, but, you know, all supervisors, we want to help our constituents, we want to spend more money. And so, for her being there to say, no, no, hold on, you know, like, let's think about this, you know, this is, this is the budget, this is how much money we have, you know, a voice of reason when it comes to budgetary matters is very vital in a county like this. So I thank you for keeping me in check, Shirley. Yeah. Okay, so proclamation recognizing Shirley E. Ryan for her 26 years outstanding service with Calaveras County. Whereas on March 5th, 1990, Shirley Ryan joined Calaveras County as an account clerk two, working for the Social Welfare Department. And whereas it was evident early on that Shirley was not only gifted with numbers and possessed a keen accounting ability, but she was also a bona fide workaholic of first-class integrity who remained unflinchingly dedicated to her job from beginning to end. And whereas on December 12th, 1992, Shirley was appointed to the account clerk supervisor position for the Social Welfare Department. And whereas Shirley's fiscal talents were once again recognized when she was promoted to the position of fiscal supervisor for Cal Works on January 27th, 2001. And whereas on May 16th, 2003, Shirley continued her steady upward climb by being hired to the senior administrative analyst position with the County Administrative Office. And whereas on June 12th, 2004, Shirley was promoted to the position of principal administrative analyst within the administrative office, and four years later reclassified on April 26th, 2008, to the position of Assistant County Administrative Office. And whereas Shirley Ryan, never afraid to call it as she sees it, was among the first in the county to recognize and declare the onset of recession in 2007, doing so publicly before even the US President dared to utter our word. Yep, and whereas many of the county who were grateful for the early warning are still to this day stuffing cash under their mattresses, awaiting for an official declaration that the recession has ended. So, probably never. And whereas on October 4th, 2014, Shirley was appointed by the Board of Supervisors as the interim county administrative officer, and then appointed by the Board on January 24th, 2015, as the permanent county administrative officer for Calaveras County. And whereas for the six months of her tenure as CAO, Shirley's current administrative office was a skeleton crew, had only partially staffed up when the Butte Fire struck. Yet managed to guide the county through the enormous financial and administrative complexities of seeking state and federal aid, while garnering all possible resources to help the county and the county. And whereas Shirley must, Shirley also refined and proposed the final budget variance to a final, reducing what used to be a multi-day ordeal down to a single-day exercise. And whereas Shirley Ryan was a working CAO in every sense of the word, expecting no less of herself than she did of her staff, and never ceasing to work tirelessly on behalf of the county through thick and thin, no matter how difficult circumstances. Now therefore it be proclaimed, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizing Shirley E. Ryan for 26 years outstanding service in Calaveras County.
You have been a huge inspiration, and we are going to miss you.
I don't know if I'm going to do any better than Trudy at the academy, so. It's actually, it was almost 27 years ago that I started here. Took a job as an account clerk, and it turned into a contact career. But it wouldn't have happened without the mentors I had, the opportunities that was offered, the challenges that were given to me. I have worked with wonderful people over the years. These last few years have been a real challenge, but because of staff, because of department heads, and your support, the support of the board, and the board giving me the opportunity to take on the CAO position, um, it, it's really been a remarkable and wonderful ride. Yes, the recession is over, Julie, don't worry about it. And there was a lot of thinking about that recession for people who got more here. I, I did make that proclamation during a media special report, and the town resents parts was kind enough to put it in chewing gutters about it. And I had just started with a new boss, with CAO, and he left that meeting in front of my desk the next morning and said, "Good government, you seemingly have plunged Calaveras County into a recession." Fortunately, that makes sense to me. I've learned a lot of years from people I've worked with, the CAOs that went before me, the boards that I've worked with. I, I really appreciate that. Debbie, you go and work with, I love your professional intensity, Karen, you are really understanding what a board member's roles and responsibilities are, and you do it with pride and honor and integrity, and I appreciate that. Supervisor Olivera, I appreciate working with you and your dedication to doing what 's best for the county with more enforcement. I know that's your strong background and therefore, um, your opportunity. Supervisor Clapp, I'm sorry, I don't have a chance to work with you except for maybe for a few days. Supervisor Ryan, I'm going to join our discussions in my office that often ended in some, a long after, and sometimes agreeing, sometimes not so much. But I also want to thank my family, supporting my husband Tom, who has stood by me through production and supported me throughout the hours I work, weekends, holidays, having to schedule vacations around budget time, and, and I really appreciate that support from Tom. So thank you all. I, I will miss most of you. Yeah, truly. Before you say this, I need our wonderful, big, tough support, and nobody could do this job and be successful at it by themselves. So without all that support, I would not have been successful. So thank you.
I make a motion to approve with honor.
Aye, second with same honor. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this thirteenth day of December 2016. All right, we're going to take a seven-minute break down. Come back, all of them. All right, now that we're done with the fun part, um, we'll move on to the next fun part, uh, public comments. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda may be addressed during the public comment period. Califring law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless determined to be an emergency of the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the regular agenda. Public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued at the conclusion of the consent agenda in order to provide an opportunity of the remainder of comments to be heard. Okay, uh, we're going to do three minutes. No public comments? All right, we'll move to the next agenda item. Oh, okay, sorry, Rosemary. You were data blocked with you there.
Rosemary Wilson, now living in Arnold. I thought long and hard, um, before coming here and actually getting up to talk. The last time I was here, and Chris got it right this morning before the meeting had even started, but, um, the last time I spoke, we have three minutes to speak, and after two and a half minutes, the buzzer goes off, and Cliff Edson, as the chair of the meeting, asked me a question and essentially was asking me the relevance of, of what I was talking about relating to the point against which I was speaking. And completely threw me off of what I was going to say and didn't really give me enough cha, enough time to say, finish off what I was going to say. And I find that that action was really unacceptable, and unacceptable especially given the fact that I am on social security disability for Parkinsonian symptoms. Those symptoms can vary from person to person, and I don't necessarily show all the symptoms I suffer from every time. Chris has seen some at the, at, at Behavioral Health, um, but they can, they are not necessarily apparent when you, you, when, when you look at me. So what I am going to be doing is to follow the rules under the Americans with Disabilities Act, to ask the board to enable me to speak at the meetings and to finish my thought, given every, um, every intention of speaking within the three minutes. But now, several years ago, public comment was five minutes, and pub, and I could speak easily within those five minutes.
Twenty-five seconds.
Thank you. Here we go. Thank you. But Chris also commented just how calm I appear to be when I am speaking. Well, I have looked at myself on the camera, on, on the video, and I have been amazed at how slow and deliberate and monotone and yes, calm, I am. And I'm getting more so, I will not get better with regard to that. So for those reasons, I will be contacting, um, whomever I need to contact to, to enable me to participate under the Americans with Disabilities Act, and it ha, allow me to have, um, have adequate time to present my case. Thank you.
Good morning again. Marty Crane, District Five. So I came to a cog meeting, and that cap, clock up there was bright, was on, and I was walking up in front of the building, and that's what I saw. I thought, what is that, bright red light? I mean, it's like a beacon. And I came in and I went, holy Toledo, what is that? And then I came, and they went, this isn't working. They unplugged it. Then I came to the planning commission meeting, and they had it on, and it had started well before the meeting, and it was just, the meeting was like an hour and a half over, and it said two hours and 45 minutes or something, and I thought, what is this? And so today it's turned off, thank you. But as a taxpayer, I'd like to know the purpose and what it costs me to have that, and my vote is to get rid of it. That's all I can say.
Alice Callan, Taxpayer Association. I'd like to welcome the new board and express appreciation to the outgoing board members. It's been a, it's been a really kind of a rough, uh, uh, four years, and somebody said that there was more issues faced during this short period of time than maybe 20 years of a normal board. And I'm not saying that the board's not normal, but that, uh, it's quite, uh, it's quite impressive that the, the can-do, uh, attitude and the professionalism that's, that's been expressed. There, there's a few things that the taxpayers are appreci, appreciate with the board, but not just the board. There's a, uh, the, uh, the clerk of the Board of Supervisors has done just an incredible job, and she doesn't get recognition very often, but I think, uh, she ought to be included in, in, because of her diligence. And, and also, uh, our, our, um, county auditor controller, Rebecca Callan, she's, she has stood up here and really went to bat for the taxpayers, and especially the, uh, commercial, uh, business community in the issue of, uh, of garbage collection, where the, where the, uh, this was going to be forced on them to pay even though the costs were not really always reflective of, of, uh, of, of what it cost to, to do the garbage. And so, um, because of her speaking up, and also Taxpayer Association speaking up, that was changed, and that's one of the bright things that happened in, in the county during this, uh, uh, this last, uh, period of time. And, uh, also our, our county, uh, assessor has been really overloaded with work, but in spite of that, been able to keep up with it, and even though she received, uh, criticism a while back when, uh, property values went down, she was adjusting the rolls to reflect the lower property values. This did reduce income to the county, but instead of, uh, of thanking her for her diligence, uh, sometimes she was criticized because it seemed like she was stealing money from the, uh, from county government, but she wasn't. She was, uh, protecting the taxpayer.
Fifteen seconds.
And, uh, now, I, I don't want to complain about the length of time that I'm allowed to talk, but I'm so glad that I got my 30 seconds. Thank you.
My name's Bonnie Newman, I'm from Double Springs, and I too had the intent of coming up and talking about, uh, the limited time that, um, for public comments. Over the years, I've watched the, uh, Board of Supervisors reduce their meetings from four a month, sometimes five a month, to sometimes two a month. At the same time, with no real, uh, reasoning, we've been limited to three minutes rather than five. I would hope that in the future, unless you're projecting, you know, 400 people coming before you, that you allow people to speak for their five minutes, and I'm speaking, of course, to the incoming supervisors, so that we can express how we feel since our time is very limited. Oftentimes, um, when the 30 minutes is used up, we have to wait for the entire meeting to be able to speak at the end of the day, and if that's true, then we should certainly be allowed to spend five minutes for waiting, five hours. Anyway, keep that in mind for next year's, um, supervisor meetings, and the public wants to be heard, and oftentimes I think it's the most brilliant comments made or dur, during public comments. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Um, and I, I too, oh, thanks.
Alice Montgomery, I came up here to thank many of you for your hard work this past year. A lot of you have put in a lot of hours, and not always do you get the recognition. I want to start with Barbara Sook and Sheriff DeBasilio. They are careful, they are consistent, they are constant. They do put in a lot of hours and do a lot of effort that people don't really know, and I'm really thankful for them, and I'm hope they're here for a lot of more years. That's not very good English, is it? Anyway, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors. All of you have put in a lot of hours, each and every one of you. Welcome to Clyde Clapp. I also am very excited about having Dennis Mills join us, and I think he's going to do an amazing job. I want to thank Dennis and Michael Olivera for their hard work on the water situation. Water's the new gold. So I appreciate that. Appreciate Supervisor Olivera for what he did with our tree mortality. He put in a lot of hours and organized a panel of experts to answer all of our questions at a town hall meeting when most of us were in the dark about why the trees were turning orange. So I appreciate that. I want to thank all the staff, all the work they've done. I enjoyed working with Diane this year, I just want to thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Um, it would be my vote that that thing goes away too. But that will be the next board's, uh, concern. So now we're going to, uh, move the agenda around a little bit. We're going to move the consent agenda, uh, to the next, uh, item, and then we're going to move agenda item number 25, uh, to after agenda item number 11, so it will be, uh, be number 12.
No, I'm confused.
The number 25, this one, we're going to move.
To number 12.
To number 12. Yeah, the numbers will be the same, they're just going to be heard in a different order according to county council's advice. Okay. Um, so on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. You guys want a moment to review this? Yes, please. Thank you, Chair. I'm good. Any members of the public? Would you remove an item?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board, look for, um, a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, minus number 31. So moved. Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll move, we're going to move number 31, uh, to the, uh, end of the regular agenda, so it will be, um, after, heard after 24. All right, thank you for that. Now we're going to move on to agenda item number nine.
Item number nine is from the Board of Supervisors to receive a report from the Board Chair, Department Heads, Cal OES, and FEMA update on Butte Fire recovery.
Good morning. Brian Moss with the Administrative Office. Uh, once again in our once-a-month update for Butte Fire recovery, uh, things continue to move forward. Um, we are, are, we're kind of starting to see Butte Fire recovery kind of wind down as tree mortality winds up. I though, I know that, uh, Mr. Mel Knight is here to give you an update today, um, and so is, uh, Mr. Krovitz to probably talk about, uh, burn trees, an update on that, and anybody else that, uh, would like to give an update, um, as to what their functions are is appreciated right now. Thank you.
Mel Knight, EMA Administrator. And just an update on buttfire structural burn debris. The last phase is the insurance cost recovery, which relates to trying to ensure there isn't duplication of benefit per agreements with FEMA and state OES as a condition of accepting their funding. One thing we're doing now, because of the holidays, while we have the Tetra Tech contract in place, we're looking to fine-tune and confirm all the obligations in process related to this activity. We'll be presenting an update, probably having activities beginning in earnest in the first part of next year.
Great. Thank you for that.
I just wanted to inform the board that I received a call late yesterday afternoon from RCRC. They have granted Calaveras County another $300,000 towards buttfire recovery. They have asked that we sign the agreement, so I will be bringing that to the board for the meeting of the 27th because they really hope to issue that check before the end of their calendar year. But Mary Pitter, who I spoke with, has forwarded the agreement to me, and I will get that on the agenda for the 27th.
Thank you, CEO.
All right, that's great news.
That's good news.
I have a question. Is the money allocated for that 300 as it has been in the past in regards to infrastructure for sewer, et cetera?
I haven't looked at the -- I did not have a chance to look at the agreement. I know there are some different provisions in this agreement than there were in the original one, where it just left it up to the county, and there was no cap on how much money per victim. This one, I believe, has a $2,500 cap per victim. So, I will be looking through that, and I will discuss in the board Agenda Item what the differences are between the original $150,000, which we've already expended, and the $300,000 that we have -- will be received.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Croweitz, Public Works Director. Buttfire recovery, the majority of the action has been with the burn tree removal program. As the board is aware, or most of the board is aware, we've experienced a number of delays obtaining NEPA clearance, which is required due to the federal grant funding. The current delay is due to the State Historic Preservation Office having concerns with historic and cultural resources monitoring and mitigation during the tree removal process on both the public rights of way and the right of entry properties. Those are the private trees that have the potential to fall onto public roads. As a result, the board has passed a local state of emergency, being worried and concerned that because the trees have been dead and in the ground for more than a year, they're going to start falling. So, we asked our arborists to go out and identify trees that were in exigent need of being removed, trees that were large and starting to lean. They identified about 14 of those. County forces took out about four of them. The other 10 to 12 require higher order of professional services. So, we advertised, bid, and awarded -- haven't awarded yet, but we advertised, bid, and evaluated proposals for tree removal contractors, identifying that the contractor would be doing traffic control, dropping the trees, hauling the logs to Rock Creek where we could treat them, and then onsite treatment of brush and slash. We received three bids. We made a determination that two were qualified and one was not. One is Sierra Mountain, who was one of the bidders on the larger tree removal contract that did not receive an award. And the second one was the Coway Sutton team. We will be pushing the contract up to the CAO's office for signature for the Sierra Mountain contract. And unfortunately, because we have existing contracts with Coway Sutton Sutton, over a certain amount, we have to bring that contract to the board, and that will allow us to go with on-call removal. With these two contracts, we'll have the capacity to take out, on a task order basis, up to about 100 trees immediately. We're hoping to have some resolution on our delays on the major tree removal program within 30 days so that we could start removing the 8,000 or so that we need to do. Any questions?
Chair, I have a question.
Please.
The recent storm activity in that burnt area, how did we do overall?
There were some small ones, small trees that came out. We have some areas of recurring stormwater debris. Many of those we have treated in the last year. We had one up on Whiskey Slide that we've treated, and it seems to be stabilized now. We had a couple of areas on Mount Ranch Road, spent some time replacing culverts and cleaning culverts. My drive yesterday today showed that we've got it stabilized. We had to do some repairs on erosion sediment control and do some work off-site, but we did that. We still have an area of significant concern with Haver. Haver Road west of the North Fork of the Casunas River -- of the North Fork of the Calaveras River Crossing is being severely eroded. And we need to do emergency work to preserve the ability to maintain at least a one-lane road open as a through road. Otherwise, we are going to lose the ability of Haver to be a through road from Jesus Maria.
And is sandbag supplies and such available still for folks?
Yes, they are, at the normal stations. Thank you for that question. Unfortunately, I learned not to discuss sandbagging and flood control, together with burned.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other staff reports? Okay, I'll take a public comment on this issue now.
Hi again, Rosemary Wilson. I just wanted to thank Jeff and the other department heads for the work that they've done in order to keep the roads open and what needed to happen after the buttfire. I think there's still a lot to do, so let's not forget that it's happened, and there's work to be done as well, unfortunately, as the dead tree removal in other areas. But I do appreciate what they've accomplished this last year. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Alice Calat, Taxpayer Association. I appreciate the work the county's doing, and I wonder if it would be good, looking ahead, to assign a manager or coordinator, or somebody in charge of a particular non-recurring item like the bug tree problem, or maybe even fire recovery. If one person were responsible for that, that had the skills, especially the skills to understand the financial reporting requirements, that would more likely ensure that we get reimbursement from other levels of government that sometimes it's been brought into question because of the way we've been reporting. So, if we had somebody in charge of the particular non-recurring item like the bug trees, perhaps we would have a more smooth working environment for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any board comments?
I have a comment, and I'd like to, if not today, because I recognize some of the staff is not able to be present, but I'd like to hear on the next update in regards to the FEMA, where we are in regards to the housing of FEMA. I know it was an 18-month-type arrangement where we are with that, if we're still having people living in FEMA housing, and how that's moving along. And then, I'd also like to hear from the Building Department in regards to permits issued in that particular area and the rebuild of homes and such.
We'll make sure that information is available. Thank you.
Yes, good point. Thank you.
Chair, I have a comment. In regards to the bark beetle tree mortality issue and the manager for that program, we actually have Mr. Mike Miller, that's doing our grants with that, under direction and control of Brian Moss, our Assistant CAO. At the time, I'll be providing some information as a result of his efforts and how that's benefited Calaveras County from our state task force meeting from yesterday. But to answer the issue, we do have that person in place. Hopefully, we'll make that a permanent condition as the time progresses.
Okay. Move on to item number nine.
Item 10 is from Public Works to authorize a grant of easement for landscape purposes to Stephen J. Arrola and Elaine J. Arrola along county property.
Jeff Croweitz, Public Works. This is a longer-term issue that we think is a solution to a problem that occurred as a result of the construction of the courthouse and the new jail facility. Adjacent landowners were complaining about impacts, visual impacts, and noise impacts of the new facilities, and suggested that if they could plant some trees, it would soften the visual and hopefully diffuse some of the noises. So, this board item is an easement for landscape purposes that would allow the adjacent property owner the ability to go onto county land across the fence -- it's actually quite far away from the facilities -- and plant a line of trees and maintain a line of trees that would mitigate the impacts of the new facility. So, it's a long-term, hopefully, solution. The easement is a result of the request by the landowner. The landscaping, as proposed, will hopefully reduce all the impacts, the visual and noise impacts. The cost for the landscape and landscape maintenance will be by the landowner, and there are requirements for notice in the county when they go on. And this package provides for them to do that work. Any questions on it?
Mr. Chair, I have a comment on this particular item. I have personally experienced, with Sheriff's Department as a bailiff at the court, the issue addressed by the Arrola family, and I would highly support this landscaping project. And I feel your pain, Mr. Arrola, when it comes to sight and noise. And I, once again, would encourage our board members to vote favorably for this request.
Yes, Steve Arrola, District One Landowner. Apologize for bringing this trivial issue to the board in light of so many other more important issues that the county is facing. Just want to point out that as a nearby property owner, that the constant drone of the air handler system, the constant emergency diesel generator that gets fired up, the garbage truck delivery at 6:00 a.m. in the morning, the prisoners' exercise yards and hearing them exercise 6:00, 7:00, 8:00, and 10:00 o'clock at night. So, it's just a little disturbing when we're in a rural area. So, I appreciate your support in this, and would ask that you pass this and give us that easement, the right to plant. It will be also benefiting the county. That way, the county personnel, employees, won't see me streaking to my hot tub. I'm not talking about that. So, I think it works two ways. Thank you.
Sorry, taking some housekeeping business there. Public comment, please. No public comment? Any more board comment? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Chair.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for.
Item 11 is from the Board of Supervisors to receive a presentation of the 2016 IHSS Advisory Committee report.
My name is Jennifer Grabowski. I'm the chairperson of the IHSS Advisory Committee for Calaveras County. I am also -- my day job is as a disability advocate and an independent living specialist for an agency called DRAIL, and we provide services in the Motherlode area, Amador, Calaveras, Tooney, and Mariposa Counties. I am a person with a disability myself. Most of the people who work at my agency are I am hearing impaired. So, I brought up an Advisory Committee member to help me here in case I'm having trouble if I get questions. So, that's who I am. What I'm going to do today, I'm sensitive to the fact that you have a long agenda and you're short on time, so we're just going to zip right through this. We're going to do a brief review of the IHSS program. We're going to review the advisory committee activities. We're going to update the changes to the IHSS landscape, and we're going to ask you to take action on some items. So, I apologize, I had a PowerPoint.
No action.
Future action.
No official vote, let's tell you, let's say that. Does that clarify things? No?
No, we understand it's just a presentation of information.
Right. But what good is a presentation if I'm not recommending anything or asking you to do anything?
Yeah, she's just worried that we were going to be taking action when it wasn't Agenda I, so we're not taking any action on this Agenda I.
You are not taking any action. I'm asking you to consider doing some things. Okay. So, the function, I apologize, I wanted to say I had a PowerPoint, and I had some technical difficulties getting it up on the projector, so we're going to work from the paper copy. I do have copies for the public if you would like to follow along. The function of the IHSS Advisory Committee is to understand IHSS in Calaveras County, to report to the governing board, which is you, the Board of Supervisors, regarding IHSS in Calaveras County, to do outreach to the community regarding IHSS, and to advocate for the interests of IHSS. IHSS is a program, it's unique to California. Almost every state has a program where people can receive caregiving services, but California is unique in that the recipients, called consumers, can choose their caregiver. They are not required to take a caregiver that the state assigns them. So, that's a double-edged sword in California because, yes, you have the right -- we're big on rights of people with disabilities where I work. You have the right to choose your own caregiver, but you also have that responsibility, and that's not always so easy to do. And I'll touch on that a little bit later. It uses Medicaid funding, state funding, and county funding, a little bit of county funding, to provide consumer-driven in-home care to those who meet the program criteria. Providers perform such tasks as meal preparation, bathing, oral hygiene, grooming, dressing, laundry, and routine cleaning. So, they're very invasive sorts of services. You wouldn't want just anybody doing those things for you necessarily. In practice, IHSS caregivers are often the only lifeline for our most vulnerable population. Literally, sometimes a caregiver is the difference between someone starving and not, someone having food and not, someone getting to the doctor and not. So, they're pretty important to the people that they're serving. For the numbers, in Calaveras County, as of October 2016, there are 389 people who were approved for services. 109 of them are in Copperopolis and San Andreas, 97 in Wallace and Valley Springs, 101 in Angels Camp and Arnold, and 85 in West Point Railroad Flat area. Those areas are broken down by social worker. So, those are caseloads right there. So those are caseloads right there. The 85 in West Point and Railroad Flat, that went down, of course, after the Butte fire. That used to be a higher number. There are two types of providers in Calaveras County. There are registry providers, and there are non-registry providers. Registry providers are pre-qualified by the public authority. We have 58 of those in Calaveras County, and we have 316 total providers. So you see right now that there's a difference between the number of approved cases, people who can receive services, and the number of providers. I did an analysis on the numbers, I didn't have numbers for every month, but typically there are between 40 and 70 people who don't have a caregiver and need one. People aren't approved for this program unless they really, truly need those services. So we have a gap there. The non-registry providers are those who are bound by the consumers. It's a family member, a friend, a person from church, you know, whatever. So I did a little graph. You can see that in the yellow on the graph here, those are the number of paid cases. And you can see since 2013 and before, it goes up every year. It goes up month over month. The green is registry providers. So the public authority has a list of pre-qualified providers that people can choose from if they can't find anyone on their own. So you can see that that hovers right around 50 to 70. We have 50 to 70 registry providers. And then the blue line, those are the number of matches that the registry is able to make for consumers. So that hovers between 2 and 7 a month. And you'll see there's a little uptick there in 2016. That's not because we have more providers. That's not because we have better qualified providers, that's because people are getting desperate. They're very, very desperate. I serve four counties and I deal, people call me for problems with IHSS. They say, "I can't find a provider, my provider's stealing my oxy, my provider won't work for me unless I double their hours on their timesheet." For instance, they're approved for 10 and they only work five, and I put 10 on the timesheet. So that kind of stuff is going on. And it's a very difficult position for a consumer to be in because that's their only shot at groceries, right? They don't have, I have a consumer, literally, she's starving, and she's falling between the cracks, and there's no one to help her. So, my hearing is feeding back. So there are some serious problems, and for the people who, this is a small program compared to some of the programs that you deal with, but it's super important for the people who really need it. So some things to know about IHSS. Consumers are elderly, blind, or disabled. This program allows them to continue living independently in their own homes, which is less important than being placed in an institution. They're typically very low income. You get IHSS, you qualify automatically if you are on SSI, which is 889 right now or less. You might have a share of cost if you make between, I'm going to say, $1,800 and $900 a month. You pay part of that yourself. So they're very low income. They choose and manage their own providers, that's their responsibility. So on the one hand, if you don't have a provider, that's on you, right? We live in a free country where people are expected to take care of themselves. But on the other hand, maybe there's more things that we could do to make sure we have a good pool of providers to draw from. So in Calaveras County, IHSS providers are paid minimum wage, and many are a lifeline for their consumers. For the components of the IHSS system, the federal government provides a lot of the funding, comes down through the state, which adds some. There's the governing board, which the Board of Supervisors is the IHSS governing board. There's the public authority, who is the employer of record for these providers and is supposed to maintain the registry. There's IHSS in Social Services, which is CHHS. They provide the social workers, those are the people who go out to assess whether someone qualifies for IHSS or not, and the advisory committee. As far as membership, last year I came here and I told you we were having difficulty keeping a full advisory committee, and this year I have the pleasure of telling you that we've had a full committee all year long. But that includes six current or former consumers, people who have used caregiving services, one current or former provider, and four members of the general public. Several of our members are not putting in new applications, so we are going to have openings at the beginning of this next year, so keep that in mind, because that's one of the things that I'm going to ask you to consider. Our recent activities for the advisory committee, we are doing a semi-annual newsletter, which I believe you have a copy of, or you'll be getting a copy of it. We did a roles and responsibilities handout card. We are in the process of doing a consumer survey. We have marginally increased cooperation with the public authority, and we had a really good foundational meeting with Christian Brinkes, the new CHHS director. It was pretty productive. So pleased to report on those things. As far as the IHSS landscape, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of centralization going on in the state. So some functions that used to belong to the county in some counties are being centralized, and that is a process that may or may not continue. It's kind of a grand experiment right now. So what things are going to look like in the future is kind of up in the air. As far as Calaveras County, there is an issue with our providers. We don't have enough of them. We need more. They're not paid very much to begin with. And their union representation, they don't have any direct representation in Calaveras County. The dues are being collected with great regularity, but there is no current contract, and there hasn't been one since 2011. So that's one thing to, probably needs some attention somewhere along the way. Likely changes as a result of the recent national election include cuts to safety net and entitlement programs. So we don't know exactly what's going to happen, but we know that we have a new Congress and we know that we have a new president, and we know that the Speaker of the House intends to really reform a lot of these programs. So if you think back to what I told you about this population that's being served, I would encourage you not to just accept the default, to try to do better for the people of Calaveras County. And there is a relationship between the quality of providers that we have and the number of providers that we have and how much we pay them. So if you flip over to the last page, maybe I used the wrong terminology, but these are the things that I would, and the advisory committee would like you to consider. We'd like you to consider an increase of pay for providers, and putting an emphasis on growing Calaveras County's provider registry. Our provider registry has not grown at all in the last four years. It goes up and down between 70 and 58 registered providers. So I would like you to let it be known that your expectation is that the committee, the public authority, and Social Services work together positively and productively with a free exchange of information. And please, 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 even if you're an outgoing supervisor, you're still a leader in the community. So please refer people that you know, please refer your constituents to serve on the IHSS Advisory Committee. We're sort of unique in that the people who are supposed to be serving on this committee are vulnerable. They may be ill, they have disabilities, they don't even sometimes make enough money to come to a meeting without the stipend. And even with the stipend, it's iffy. They have to hire a cab, or they have to find someone to drive them. So it's very difficult for them. So if you can find people who are interested, who are able, we really need help finding members. So those are my requests, and that's my report. I can answer questions if you would like.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Do you have any comments?
I have a comment. I'd like to say that it's been a pleasure serving on the IHSS committee for the last two years. It's a very dedicated group of people who are trying to do the best they can for our senior population, our disabled population for Calaveras County. And I wish there was a larger pool of money to be able to do all the wonderful things that this committee would like to see. And Jennifer, will you take a moment to introduce the advisory committee members that are present?
Certainly. Would you stand up? Advisory committee members? We have Bonnie Newman, and Marty Crane, and Victor Mill.
Thank you for your service.
I'd just like to add a few numbers to the material that we've received. This program provides $5 million of services to Calaveras County. $5 million for approximately 400 people that need the services. Calaveras County contributes approximately 15% of that, so that would be about $750,000 at Calaveras just for the services, not for the social workers or anyone else. Also like to tell you that this program has almost doubled in the past 10 years. About 12 years ago, there was about 200 people on this program. Now there's almost 400 people on this program. Something else for you to consider also is although we have 400 employees, they do not receive vacation time, sick leave, and the majority of them have no health benefits at all. Two years ago, the workers received $2 an hour above the minimum wage, but because of inactivity by our union representatives, we are now union wage workers once again. We will look and anticipate a wage increase next month when the minimum wage goes up. Otherwise, we're at the bottom of the barrel as far as employees are concerned, and looking to improve the status so that we can provide quality care for our consumers.
Marty Crane, again, I just wanted to add to that, that for those that are not immediately involved with caregiving, or haven't in some way in the past been involved, it is the most difficult job, not just physically. We think of jobs that are physically difficult as being where you're out digging at your holiness or holing it. But you are physically moving people, and so not only physically, but emotionally, spiritually, and financially difficult. It is a challenge like no other. And I just wanted to say, for those who serve with us as a member of this committee, we need your voices. We need the voices of the consumers, and the providers, and the public at large. But in order to hear those voices of the consumers, like Jennifer was saying, it's difficult for them to get there. So many times, serving on that board, we recognize that that person needs to be at the table. If they can all travel, we will go pick them up and bring them. And if that's not possible because of whatever's happening in their life at the moment, we will tell them what's on the agenda, deliver them an agenda, have a chat with them, see what words they need us to bring to the committee, and then follow up with that after the meeting to see. Whatever we have to do to keep them engaged and hear their voices, because after all, this is all about the consumers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you.
Any other board comments or questions? Any public comments?
Hello, my name is Raymond Smith. I live in Valley Springs. I was a caregiver and medication technician for over four years with Atria Senior Living in Walnut Creek as well as Stockton. And I just want to implore you to find the resources for this program, because it is absolutely important to the people, not only to the people who need these resources, but to the caregivers who provide these resources. I understand that you're going to have the sheriff ask for further resources for his department and what they do, and I absolutely know how important that is. And I understand your important job of weighing, you know, the resources, especially with Shirley's job as the administrator. I just want you to know that it is, you know, these are very, I would say, I'm trying to think of the word she used just a little while ago, but, you know, these folks have problems of their own. And they go and they support, they're the hands and the feet, and not only, but sometimes they raise the spirits of the people that they care for. You know, just the smallest thing can mean the world for someone. And they provide that, not only the small things, but the big things. And these people deserve a little bit more than what they're getting. And I think if we do that, then there'll be a lot more of them. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we're going to skip to item 25, which is from the Planning Department, to receive a status report on the cannabis cultivation urgency ordinance and discussion of the implications of Proposition 64.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Peter Maurer for the Planning Department. I just have a few quick slides here that provide some information of where we're at with the urgency ordinance and processing the applications. There are other departments involved in this. I do know that the sheriff office is in here, the sheriff would like to provide some oral comments, and maybe other departments as well. So I'll just go through my slides and just go through some quick numbers for you. So far, as far as personal cultivation, we had 130 so far. And as you recall, people are able to apply for registration for personal cultivation beyond the June 30th deadline. It's an ongoing process, so someone can continue. So to date, we have 130 applications. We've approved 28, four have been denied, and there's another 98 that are still in process. We've reviewed the paperwork, everything's there, it's just a matter of trying to complete the inspections, making sure that everything meets the standards. As far as caregiver, a total of 76 applications, six have been approved, four denied, 65 verified, and one still pending review. Of course, the bigger numbers, the 740 applications we received are the commercial registrations, either anything over 100 square feet per person for personal or caregiver use. We have approved 19. There are 50 that have been denied so far. 82 have been verified. Verified means we've looked a little more closely at their application, not just simply the intake process that we went through in late June, but also ensured that everything that was submitted met our requirements. 109 have been validated, and validated means that there is the second deadline date of submittal requirements of September 7th for various state documents, involves a local business license. Those we have verified, the 109 of those have been reviewed. It's just a matter of getting out there now and completing the site inspection and ensuring that the photographic evidence that was submitted along with the application matches what was on the ground. That was the primary thing the Planning Department staff was doing. And then... That was the primary thing the planning department staff was doing, and then working with the sheriff and code enforcement team to complete the site inspection to ensure that what's on the ground is the same as what's been submitted to us in the application. Unfortunately, we still have a large number, 477, that are still pending, just have not been able to get to them due to the huge number and the staffing availability that we have. The other thing that's taken quite a bit of time over the last several months are the appeals. We've had 34 appeals that's bound to the planning commission. 26 of those have been denied as of last Thursday. We've approved, the planning commission's approved one. There are six more scheduled for hearing next week, and one has been withdrawn. Of those, eight have been appealed to this body. You've denied seven of those and approved one of them. So, that's, each one of those, you know, many hours' worth of work, and that's really sort of bogged down our process right now. But it's, you know, it's part of the process. People have the right to appeal the decision, and it's a fair opportunity for them to make their pitch to the hearing body, the commission or you, to ensure that we have treated them The inspections, we've had a total of 204 inspections so far by the code enforcement officers. 106 of those are commercial, another 98 are the personal and caregiver inspections. The results of those inspections have been, 94 have been in compliance, there were 60 that are out of compliance, 21 were given correction notices, there were minor things that gave the ability to correct those minor, minor problems. And then another 29, there's been sort of a challenge getting out there. In some cases, there's been no access, or in some cases, there was no cultivation there on the site at all. As far as revenue and expenditures are concerned, as you recall, we received approximately $3.7 million in application fees. To date, we have, or this was as of November 18th, we've expended $668,000 on that. You see the breakdown here by department, a lot of it going to planning staff, as well as sheriff's department, and code enforcement. This was about a month ago, and looking at sort of, you know, average of the last couple of months, if you go back to the presentation we made about two months ago, we're probably spending about $180,000 per month. So if you want to add that to the past month and bring it up to this date, so to give you an indication of where we're at as far as the expenditure of money. Recall that we still have 477 to process, and we've only processed about 100 of them so far, so we've got a ways to go. I am hoping that we will be able to increase our review, you know, everything is sort of moving in a, a big batch through the processing, and I'm hoping that we'll start picking up in final determinations whether they're approved or denied, but, you know, getting through that over the next, next month or two, and get more of those completed as we move, as we move forward. One other thing that I wanted to talk about briefly, which was included in the staff report, was the effect of Prop 64 on our program. As you know, 64, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, was passed by the voters of the state. It doesn't really have a direct effect on our program. That was for recreational use, and this is, you know, our program here for medical cultivation. There are some things that we'll need to know as we move forward. There are some, you know, the state, the act allows the county to regulate it up to a point. We can't completely ban cultivation for personal use, so there's up to six plants. Indoor or in accessory structure cannot be prohibited, but we can also regulate, you know, other aspects of recreational cultivation. That's something that we will probably want to address in the near future, of what kind of restrictions, if any, that we want to put into place. It's not on the agenda today, but just want to bring that up as how that, that initiative affects this program. Again, this is for medical use. The AUMA was for recreational use. That's really all I have right now as far as facts and figures. Is there any questions that you might have that I could elaborate on a bit more?
Comments, questions, the boards?
I have some questions.
Yes.
But I, I think maybe I'll hold off if, if there's more people that are going to be presenting from the staff. You mentioned the sheriff. Is there anybody else who's going to be speaking?
I don't know.
Just me, I guess. Just to give you some of our numbers, we've completed 310 of the backgrounds. We have 176 of them that are pending. We have 227 of them that were sent out, and we've gotten no response. They've been mailed out, and nobody's claimed them, I guess, if you want to call it that. We disqualified 54 of them, and those are just on the commercial side. We're actively, currently working 97 open cases. We have come across 55 unknown, or known unregistered grows, and we've had 410 complaints filed with the department, with the sheriff's department. Again, like Mr. Maurer said, it's, it's causing a delay in getting to these inspections to finish the process up. Any other questions?
Board, I have a question for the sheriff. You call your enforcement team the Met Team, is that correct?
Yeah.
Marijuana enforcement team?
Correct.
How many officers, or I'm sorry, how many deputies are assigned to that?
I have two deputies and a sergeant. We just hired a, one of the sheriff techs. We got two positions. We're actually interviewing today for the other position. And we have no foreseeable future deputies to be able to put in there at this time. We're still trying to backfill our street positions that we've lost. And about two, week and a half, last week, I think, we lost another deputy who quit. Went to Placer City, Placer County.
How are we on staffing the beads on a normal patrol basis?
Still running with three deputies in the county and the sergeant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Questions? Okay, yeah. So, I want to review the numbers, see if I heard them right. So, you have 310 background checks for commercial growers?
Correct.
That are in process at some point?
We have 310 of them that are completed, yes.
Completed. So, 310 are completed.
Correct.
You have 176 pending.
Correct.
And 227 were sent out. What do you mean by that?
The, the packages were mailed out to the applicants to contact us, to do background checks through the DOJ, and we have not heard back from them.
Okay. And what is kind of a normal response time are you seeing with that? Are they?
In the past, they were, typically, they're pretty quick. They get back to us right away, so they can get the registration process going. The issue that I think we're going to have with this is, a lot of these folks, and this is coming from my technician that's doing this, is that they're sending these to the address that they're putting on their application, and as you well know, we don't have addresses that collect mail in rural parts of our county. So, some of them, they have received back, undeliverable, because they're not going to a P.O. box, and others, we haven't received any response back from. So, I don't know where they're at. It's like, you know, Christmas time with your mail, general mail, we don't know where it's at. And nobody's contacted us to say, hey, what's going on with my application? So, we don't know.
So, if they were to contact you, how do they get ahold of you?
Just call the sheriff's office, the 6500 number, 754-6500.
Okay.
And say, hey, we haven't received our application, or we haven't received anything. And again, that's...
So, by this point, would all the commercial applicants have been notified with the sheriff's department on this particular issue?
Everything that we've had has been mailed out, yes.
Okay.
The 400, or the 300, well, if you take the total of them, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's a total, what we had was 736 registered sites, and Peter, I think, said there was 740, so maybe we're missing four somewhere. We'll have to get together on that.
737, but there may be some changes, you know, one...
And there could be, yeah.
So, at this point, the commercial applicant should have heard from the sheriff's department?
Yes.
And if they haven't, then they can call the 6500 number to inquire?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And on the, when you talk about 97 open cases, is that because there's still background checks going on there?
Well, I, maybe I misled you. The 97 open cases are the active, either criminal and/or civil cases that, for the process of the registrations that we're pursuing, that we're working.
So, further review of?
Yeah.
Of those. And what were the 57? What was that number?
I don't remember the 57. Oh, 55. Those are unregistered known grows that we have come across.
Okay. So, have those come through the complaint line?
Some may, some may have not. I'm not sure. We have an abundance of complaints. I think we're over 300.
Okay. So, you mentioned 410 complaints filed. Is there duplication in those complaints?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's total.
Okay.
That's total, separate complaints.
Okay.
Now, whether they're on the same property, I'd have to go back to research that, but we had a total of 410 complaints.
That's what I was wondering, if maybe there's four complaints on the same property?
And there very well could be. There very well could be.
And is this coming through the hotline that you established, or is this?
Yes, most all of them are, yeah.
Okay. How do you follow up on those complaints? Are you calling back the person who's complained to?
Depending, if, if we have multiple complaints on one particular location, we will go out there and work it. It's kind of like being the ER of a hospital. The worse you are, the worse, the faster response time you're going to get. So, the ones that are more prevalent, that look like they're going to cause problems, we're trying to get to as fast as we can. The problem is with all the other cases that we have going on, some of them we're not getting to.
Sure.
We just don't have the time or the manpower.
Okay. And now with harvest pretty much over for at least outdoor, are you seeing complaints down?
No, not really, because, just because of harvesting outdoors completed.
Right.
They're still processing inside, you still have harvesting going on indoors, too.
Okay, all right.
So, we're still seeing some complaints.
When you talk about the Met Team, are the two deputies and the sergeant currently, is that part of the money expenditure that we're seeing today?
Yes.
That's what's, and are you hiring other folks within the department to handle kind of the administrative area, specifically the person who is doing the background?
Those are folks that are already in the department, that are established in the department, that are putting their other duties aside to do the background, yes.
So, you haven't hired anybody extra to do background checks?
I did hire, we actually had a retired person that used to work for us that came in and volunteered, so we put her on the payroll, so she's doing nothing but that. And we hired, I actually transferred one young lady from our jail who used to be a correctional or a service tech, and brought her back over as a sheriff service tech, so that she can start doing that. And I had those four part-time positions, and again, we're in the process of trying to hire another one today, hopefully find one.
Would you say your bogged down in this is related to the background checks? Are you?
Well, it's a combination of everything. It's not just the background checks, because the background checks are more internal, whereas the site inspections with planning and code compliance are out in the field. So, it's a combination of everything. It's just, there was so much of it, it's just, we just don't have the manpower, as all the departments are suffering.
Okay.
So, it's overall.
How are you doing the personal and caregiver background checks? Are you?
The same way, they're, actually, we've done, on the personal caregiver, we had 195 registered sites, excuse me, those are personal, but there's no backgrounds to do on those. On the caregiver, there was 72 registered sites. We've completed 28 of those backgrounds, and we have eight of those pending, and 34 of them we have, again, received no response back from the caregivers.
Okay. So, at this point, everybody in this category too has been, a packet's been mailed out to these folks and?
From us, yes.
From you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, 34 for the caregiver. Personal doesn't really apply here, and 227, no responses from packets that have gone out.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Sheriff, I have a question for the sheriff additional. Sheriff, have you ever received a call from somebody who said, hey, I didn't get my packet? Has that happened?
Not at this time that I'm aware of, no.
Of the 227, you've never had that happen?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Any questions?
Questions for Peter?
Go ahead.
So, Peter, thank you, Sheriff. So, Peter, on your particular, let's see here, when you talk about, on your first slide, 28 approved, four denied, those, those denials never went past the planning department because they just didn't qualify?
Those are ones that we accepted their application upon review. We found that they were, at least in one instance, clearly growing on a commercial basis. We denied their application. They may or may not have been appealed. In some cases, they just realized they're out of compliance and didn't pursue it any further. They could have been abated, voluntarily abated, or in some cases, we've had to cite them and...
Okay. So, you're not, it's not real sure, like, how many were further appealed after this first initial denial?
Well, of the total denied, we've had, what was the number, 34 appeals so far, so...
And then when you talk about in-process verified, so paperwork reviewed, there's 65, and one is, is pending, no review. Is this pending, so the paperwork has been reviewed?
Yes.
And approved by planning? And does that, is the next step then, is they go to the sheriff's department for their background check?
It could be either that, or that needs a site inspection, or in some cases, we need to look more closely at the actual photographic evidence to ensure that they were growing prior to May 10.
Mm-hmm.
And this has been sort of the biggest challenge we've had, is to, trying to verify that they actually were cultivating or had prepared the site for cultivation. We've had a number of applications that have been denied because it just, it didn't match. We're looking at aerial imaging, and all you see is, you know, native vegetation, and yet there's pictures of a cleared site, and it's, you know, they were, in our opinion, you know, falsified information.
Okay. I'm talking more about the caregiver. You have 65 that have been verified? So, that's, that's what I'm wondering about.
So, 65 are moving forward through the process. We've looked at their paperwork. It's, you know, looks like for the most part, everything is good. The indemnity agreement's been signed, they have a valid lease. We, you know, we've checked that paperwork. So, the last part of the process would either be, you know, in some cases, they may have already gone through the background check, maybe we're still waiting on that, and they need a site inspection. The site inspection is sort of the last thing, because that's the thing that's taking the most time. We've been holding off on that until we know that we can otherwise approve that, that registration, unless there's been a complaint, and then we will send a code enforcement officer out to the site to, you know, see what, what the issue is. So, there's two paths for inspection. One is, everything looks good so far, let's do the final inspection so we can, you know, issue the registration, or we have to complain about it, or we will notice. In some cases, the sheriff mentioned that he had 55 sites that he had found, or his staff had found. For one, we either threw a complaint, or maybe we'd be on site. As we're looking at the aerial imaging that we received, both in, we got it in late May, early June, and also another flight that was done in, end of August, and then we'd see, you could see the cultivation areas very clearly on those aerial imaging. The ones that have registered, we've highlighted those. But if you're, if we're looking at the aerial imaging and you see, oh, there's one right next door, and they didn't bother to?
Register.
To register. So, we've noticed there are a number of those as well. The total amount we don't have right now, the GIS team is actually going through and doing a comprehensive search to identify how many unregistered... to identify how many unregistered cultivation sites are out there.
Okay. So when I look at both the personal and caregiver, there's like 100 and, you know, a little over 150 applicants that have been verified, and I'm assuming they've met the paperwork review, now they're waiting for a site inspection. So what does a site inspection entail for a personal or caregiver grow? Is it just code enforcement going out? Does the sheriff department partner up with code enforcement?
It's primarily code enforcement for a personal caregiver. In some cases, where we have, see on the aerial imaging that they're clearly in excess of the cultivation area that they've registered for. In one case, we had a caregiver whose maximum amount is 200 square feet, had 13,000 square feet. That, we sent out a code enforcement team, including the sheriff's department, cited them, and did an abatement on that. The, what they're looking for is, you know, is it adequate fence? Do they have their registration notice posted? Do they meet the setback requirements? Anything else as far as hazardous materials, you know, non-compliant storage of ag chemicals, for example, those kinds of things.
Okay.
And any other building permit type of, you know, through wiring or things like that, they'd also look for.
So code enforcement primarily handles the personal and caregiver solo, unless there's something maybe suspicious in nature where we would call upon the sheriff's department to do a standby or escort?
Yes.
Okay. On the commercial-
Yeah, can I address a quick question? Depending upon the location and the individuals involved, a pre-site safety and threat assessment has to be done on every visit to ensure that code enforcement's going to be safe, our staff's going to be safe. It's a time-consuming process. We don't just get to pick up and run out there and act as though maybe it was a food inspection that health, that the health department does. It's handled very differently before we ever leave the office.
On the commercial side of it, so a pending review, so currently there are 477 applications that there's been absolutely no review of?
That's correct.
Okay. So they're not even in the background category yet?
Well, they could be in the background. You know, as information is coming in, we'll make sure that, you know, a background check passes, or it doesn't pass, we'll put it in the file. If we receive the seller's permit, or the water quality control board requirement, we'll put those in the file. We just haven't had a chance. Pull out that file, open it up, go through it thoroughly to make sure, you know, okay, let's look at the dates on the lease. Is it, you know, what is it, a valid lease? Do they have proper ownership of the property? Those kind of detailed reviews that we have to get to yet.
Okay. So in the process, when you take a look at paperwork, are you notifying the sheriff's department at the same time? And they're doing background information being sent out as you're looking at?
So in some points, you know, in some part of the process, we're acting independently. In other parts, particularly around the site inspections, we're coordinating that effort. So if we find that there are potential violations, for example, we'll notify the sheriff and look at, you know, what else is going on on that site, so that if there are, you know, multiple reasons that a project, you know, one of the registrations might be denied, we will list the entire, you know, each of the reasons why it did not meet the requirements of the ordinance. So we just don't want to say, well, here's, you know, one reason, and there may be multiple reasons. We want to make sure that the applicant knows the full range of-
Comprehensive.
Reasons for the denial. At the same time, as Tuvisito had pointed out, that, you know, we want to make sure that we're coordinating our efforts. There could be other ongoing investigations. We don't want to go out to a site and, you know, disrupt an investigation of something else unrelated. Just a lot of coordination that does go on between, and particularly between the enforcement inspectors and the sheriff's office. But as we get more information, you know, we will share that information between all the team members.
So do you have somebody in your department who's coordinating this effort now? Or is it, I know you've been able to hire at least one person, so are you finding where you're able to kind of streamline your department a little bit better now with staffing, or is that still a-
Not really. I mean, ultimately, it falls on my shoulders, and I have actually one permanent position that we've been able to fill. I have three extra hire positions, two office technicians, and an additional planner. Plus, my regular staff is all involved in that, as well as trying to maintain the day-to-day operations of the department.
So you're still working out processes within your department to handle this?
I think we've got our process, you know, down pretty well, as best we can. We could probably use, you know, 20 people to handle the workload, but that's just not feasible. So we're doing the best we can, given the resources that we have, and the availability. I mean, I think there actually are, we've authorized additional extra hire positions. Just, you know, can't find anyone to help fill those slots.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions? All right, we'll move on to public comments. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board, and we will now take lunch until 1:30. Unless you wanted, was, did I move too fast? Okay, come on.
I think that might have been a bit too fast.
Well, you guys got to act quick.
Nice try.
My name is Patricia Gordo. I'm from Burson. I'd like to have a little clarification about what this particular-
Ma'am, can I have you speak into the microphone?
My name is Patricia Gordo. I am from Burson. I'd like to have a clarification on what kind of subject that, can I address all this stuff, or, I mean, any of it?
Yes.
Okay. I am against any kind of substance abuse and use, unless it's prescribed by a doctor, and the client adheres to what the doctor prescribes. I've been a caregiver for 15 years, both pro bono and privately, and I have seen a lot of abuse, and I've never taken care of someone that was using marijuana, but I've seen other things, and it's not good. And I've seen a vast deterioration once people start using it. I've seen people use the excuse of pain, when in reality, it's an excuse to have a couple of good hours versus the rest of the day not feeling good and being out of it. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from. I see some things that don't seem to be applied here. One of them is, I don't know how you can tell whether people are growing it underground, and what, these people that are harvesting their six plants or whatever, whether they're having somebody come pick up a little bit here and a little bit there on regular runs.
30 seconds.
And so, you know, I appreciate being able to be an American citizen and say a few of the things that I feel strongly about. Thank you.
I think he doesn't know the process.
Bill McManus, Hanford Hill.
Just one second, Bill, before you go. So the process, sir, is that you stand in line, and then just approach the, excuse me, sir? Yeah, just approach. After he's done, just step up to the microphone. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. As we start going through this process of evaluating the urgency ordinance, the urgency ordinance just isn't paperwork. And what we're seeing here, and no offense, but it's this whirlwind of numbers, of classifications that I couldn't find in the urgency ordinance, of verified, validated, pending, outstanding, denied, approved. You know, where do all these numbers come together? Well, so far, right now, they only come together in one place, and that's in a file cabinet. This is paperwork. When we see the number of complaints that have been called in, do we have any tracking on how many of those complaints were taken from complaint to inspection to resolution, and what were they? Or do you just acknowledge, hey, thanks for calling? Because I don't know about the sheriff's department, but I get hundreds of calls. I get hundreds of emails from people saying, what do I do? I say, well, call the anonymous tip line. Call the sheriff's department. I've already done that. I've called them 10 times. I've called so-and-so. And the people feel like they're totally disconnected, where I said, if you had a complaint about the paperwork, I think you might get an answer, because that seems to be more important right now. And while everyone hovers over the paperwork and tries to incubate these files as to whether they're complete or not, a complete grow season has come and gone. By the time this paperwork is finally considered done, verified, validated, certified, whatever, you're going to be looking at another grow season. Most of it is already gone. But the paperwork is still creating this activity. The paperwork is still covering, giving the public an illusion that this problem in our county is actually being regulated. The activity is not really being regulated. The paperwork is being very seriously regulated. And a lot of people who live out there who have problems are not consider, are concerned with whether the file is complete, or all the paperwork is in there, or various check-offs have been done. They're living next to a problem. They would like something done about it. And the paperwork doesn't seem to be accomplishing that goal for them. So they're frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Raymond Smith. I live in Valley Springs. I would like to address the issue of compassionate use, and the fact that the personal and caregiver, pretty much everything involving that undergoes a ballot initiative from 1996, as well as a follow-up Supreme Court ruling in 2010. I would just like to say that this is a compassionate issue, and I do implore you to follow your hearts in this issue, and not just your wallets, and find some understanding that this is a medicine that people use because other medicines do not provide relief for them. Personally speaking, my mother is allergic to pain medicine, opioids and such. She gets horrible itching. She's on her fifth joint replacement. She couldn't be here today because she's getting stitches removed from her hip surgery, second hip surgery. I was with her with the physical therapy and moving forward from those surgeries, and it is absolutely essential that they have the medicine so that they can have the comfort to have the physical therapy. If you do not have these things, it's just as bad as saying that you have a problem next door with a grower that is trying to get their medicine together, because a lack of this medicine is actually more detrimental than having the medicine next door. Thank you very much.
My name's Daryl Hilton. I'm from Mountain Ranch. They're doing background checks. I don't hear anything other than you're doing background checks basically on the people who apply for a license. Do they do any background checks on the people who actually work these four, these grows? Because a lot of people buy the property, then they have four, five, or six people coming in to take care of the grow. They have growers, that's what they hire them for, is to grow the plants, because the people who own the property don't know how. Without doing a background check and allowing the sheriff to do a complete background check, you've actually done nothing about keeping criminal activity from taking place in the county. The other thing is, the state of California just made it legal for anybody over the age of 21 to grow up to six plants. Now, how do you define a personal grow? State doesn't require any licensing, any, those six plants out on your patio, and you're totally legal. You can walk around with an ounce in your pocket, and it's totally legal. You can give it to somebody who's over the age of 21. It's totally legal. This is not an industry that I'm against, totally. I just think it needs to be regulated a lot better than it is. I think this is a perfect example of why it's not working. Too much paperwork, not enough people to do the job. We have a sheriff's department who hires people and loses them as fast as we get them. So what Calaveras County is actually doing is paying the $100,000 or the $120,000 it costs to train an officer to get him on duty, to have him leave to go to Calaveras County, because they can make 22% more over there than they can here. We're on the bottom of the ladder of the six counties, and I called around to find out. And it averages about 22%. Actually, it's closer to 23. But how can we expect the sheriff's department to do its job? How can we expect them to keep the criminal activity out if we restrict them only to doing the background checks on those individuals who apply? The people who own the property, very seldom are the people actually growing it. I happen to live in an area where the fire went through, and we got a lot of green, and none of it's trees.
30 seconds.
Seems to be a whole lot of people in one place. I think it should be some kind of a mechanism put in place to kind of spread these people out that are not in one place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Megan Guthrie, and my daughter Abigail Guthrie is quadriplegic, cerebral palsy, medically fragile. And I know that this is a long process through legalization, but I really don't want the patient to get lost. I don't want the patient to be used in vain and to be called a human shield when they really do exist. This summer, my daughter ran out of CBD for three months. She has been extremely ill for the past three months. She has spent much time at UCSF Hospital, and she has been having a high seizure rate. She's been having autonomic nerve dysfunction. She just got back onto CBD three weeks ago because generous farmers were able to give her donations, and she is starting to recover. UCSF just did a sleep study. She's being controlled and has medical data collection that I am much, very willing to give any board member any of her medical records to see the studies and the tracking that they have done on my daughter, and what CBD is doing for her. And in the latest study, she has grandma seizures. They have no alternatives. They have no seizure medicines that will work with her. They only have CBD oil. There is also a very big misconception that personal grows are medical patients. My daughter needs 350 milligrams a day, which is a commercial garden. Sick children cannot grow, and sick veterans for themselves. They need commercial space to make that medicine. And I don't want the patient to be lost in this regulation. It's a slow process. I think we can work together. We need to clean things up and regulate properly, but we really need not to forget about the patient in this. And I really want my daughter's name not to be used in vain, and to have the patient be considered. Thank you.
Kaz Tomaszewski, Calaveras Cannabis Alliance. I just wanted to come up and say a little bit about things that we're seeing and hearing this far into the urgency ordinance. The primary complaint is the perceived lack of speed with which the bad guys are getting, taken care of, and the good guys are getting permits. Of course, when people start feeling this way, both cannabis farmers and non-cannabis farmers, we asked some questions, talked to some people in departments. It seems like everyone believes that the main issue is staffing. Staffing goes back to retention, and retention goes back to offering competitive salaries, which we do not because of our budget issues. We're a poor county. It seems like the, that we see two possible solutions to this. One is solving that problem. And probably the best bet for that is additional funding, so that some budgets could be retooled. And we have hope that Measure C could be a large part of that, specifically for the sheriff's department. The other thing that might be possibility is automation technology. Finding ways to, and we, and granted, I'm not incredibly educated as behind-the-scenes process, but anything that can be up- as behind-the-scenes process, but anything that can be upgraded, put into more compatible, cross-referenceable databases, things that save hours, that sort of thing. And perhaps, you know, this contract that's coming up with Highway Patrol, maybe that's another way to perhaps solve that staffing problem. But that's the majority of it. In addition, I wanted to echo the comments about complaint tracking for Mr. McManus. I think that if it is a complaint-based system and we're really trying to prioritize who we're visiting, by me, I mean the county, that we have a way to, and maybe they already do, to basically figure out, you know, who's getting complained on the most. Who are the biggest violators? To make sure that really, like, the high-priority offenders are visited first. And I wonder if that's happening, and if not, if it could be done. And the last thing I want to say is that, you know, it seems like these issues we're having would be constant no matter what type of program was instituted. Whether it was regulation, whether it was banning, there's always going to be paperwork, and site visits are always going to be required. And no matter what we do, it seems like whatever the program is, whether ban or regulate, it's not going to proceed forward at a speed that satisfies most citizens until we solve those retention issues. We just need the staff.
Thirty seconds.
And that's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good morning or good afternoon, Board. I'm Sandy Maitrot, and I'm here as a citizen, not someone who has been not only involved in crafting the urgency ordinance that we're discussing currently, but also involved in the administration piece of it. And I wanted to address some of what Bill McManus brought up and others have said. The current model, as I see it, is very human labor-intensive. Mechanization through systems is critical to processing and program integration overall. And I know that after having done project and program management for 20-some-odd years at AT&amp;T, Pacific Bell, Pacific Telephone. Therein, to me, lies the greatest issue based on what I see with the current program, and that is interdepartmental integration. This program is not being managed as a true program. There are no smooth handoffs. There is no, what I would term to be, integrated issue resolution, et cetera. My gut says what we really need and what I would recommend as we look at where we go going forward is a true program lead who reports directly to the Board, drives integration between departments, standardization in reporting, and issue resolution. The department leads are working admirably on all of this. But it's overwhelming when you have other responsibilities within your department to take something like this on. So, it's beneficial to them and to the county as a whole to remove that responsibility. Gives them a little bit of breathing room. And bottom line, while I still believe, wholeheartedly, that we took the right path on this, I think we need to revisit what we've done, come up with what worked, what could possibly be improved upon. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater before you've figured it out if you just need to change soap. But at this point, current structure is counterproductive to anything that we do going forward with this program. That needs to be revisited. Any questions?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Hardenbrook, and I live on the border of Murphy's and Mountain Ranch. I've got a lot of grows around me. And some of them have been denied, of which they're now building houses on and optimizing their grows yet, even though they've been denied. My question is, what does this mean for next year for the commercial? If you've been denied or you're in the process, you're verified, who can grow next year? Is it only the people who've been approved? Or if you're still pending, validated, or verified, can you grow next year?
Just finish your comments first.
I'm sorry. Okay, then the other question is, is any income coming in next year for the people who pay this year to grow? When do they put their $5,000, which is in the urgency ordinance, down again to grow again? Does it come again next year, or because they haven't been verified, validated, or approved, they don't have to pay for next year? Thank you.
Wait on that. Any other public comments?
Al Segala, speaking as an individual. It seems like we've collected maybe $5,000 from perhaps 700-and-something farmers, commercial people, and that amounts to, I think, $3.7 million. And we have, this is all based on the emergency ordinance, which is to expire. I'm not sure of the date. It might be February. What happens to those people that paid the $5,000 if they don't have a permit by that time? What liability does the taxpayer have? In other words, can the taxpayer...if the county has to pay back money that it already spent, then it's a liability on our taxpayers. What is that liability, and how do you handle that? And so, I guess the basic question is, what happens when this ordinance expires to those people who paid the $5,000 but didn't get their permit? Thank you.
Thank you.
Gina Gonzalez, Angels Camp. That I know of, that I've counted over my personal flight, 19 growers in Bark, honey. It's a small area with a lot of growers, and I believe that they have the right to grow if they're legal. I've sat with Kaz many times and talked to him one-on-one, as you've seen in newspapers. I was just brought to my attention, having lunch with my best friend, that her friend is making $100 a day cash while she's on social security. And she gets Medi-Cal. And she gets food stamps while she's trimming bud. Now, I think there's something really, really wrong with that as a taxpayer. You know, attaboy that she's working, but I think the services should be cut back. I think those kind of people are the kind of people that are going to make people like Kaz look bad. We, as taxpayers, should be mad about that. And that's something else that should be brought up. I don't know who to bring it up to, but it very frustrates me very much. And I think that's what's going to happen if we don't open our eyes to what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deana Morris, and I'm here to say that whether these applications get approved or not, it's not getting rid of the bad actors, okay? I have at least two bad actors, no matter which way I go, in or out from my house. And this is not going to get rid of them. And one of the reasons is because there are no background checks on workers. And these people know how to ride a fine line with intimidating and terrorizing their neighbors to where they stay just above to continue doing that to us. They've also said openly that they didn't care if they were denied. They were going to continue to grow anyway. So, I think the people have spoken, when they defeated Measure D, that this isn't working as it is, and we don't need to make things continue down that path. So, I just want people to know, don't be fooled thinking that regulation is going to get rid of bad actors, because it's not. And I had one supervisor tell me personally that they would come over there and get rid of this bad actor if regulation didn't do it. But of course, that didn't happen, and this bad actor is still there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Whitkey with SunGrown Meds, and I want to thank all of you for your service on this. I know that this has been a really long, hard slog. As a grower, I spend most days afraid to go to town because my inspection might show up. I have absolute empathy for the inspectors. I work with code compliance on getting my house, getting my septic, all of that. I've had several inspections without law enforcement escorts. They know we're growing. We don't seem to be a threat. I would like to put forward that, as a farmer, I am quite happy to provide background checks for all of my employees. It's just a mom-and-son shop, but when we do bring in seasonal labor, the first thing we ask is, can you pass and will you submit to a background check? So far, I have gotten no resistance for that. People are absolutely happy to have the work. I would never employ someone that is taking advantage of the system if they are on food stamps, if they are collecting under the table for things. I don't have any patience for that. I don't think people should abuse these systems. So, I want to say thank you to everybody for what you're doing. We so much want this program to work. Measure C did, the people did speak, that they want to tax us. We're happy to pay our taxes. Just let us. I want to say to law enforcement, I absolutely empathize with you. My grandfather was shot in the line of duty when my mother was four. I know what you do is dangerous. I know what they do is dangerous. The hole in our family has been there since 1942. He was a wonderful man by all accounts. I didn't realize my loss until my grandson was born this year and everything that he missed out on, on his 13 beautiful grandchildren and 20-some great-grandchildren. We are not all animals. We are good, hard-working people who just want to help the sick people that can't grow for themselves. And I thank you for your time and your effort on this. I'm so sad to see some of you go, and I welcome you. And I hope that we can become better acquainted and meet some common ground as a community. I do not like the divisiveness that this has brought, and I hope that somehow we can all heal these rifts and move forward as a strong, prosperous community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see no more public jumping up. Last chance. I'll bring you back to the Board and ask Peter to answer those questions if you are able to. So, the registrations are valid for a period of one year from the date of issuance. So, when we issue the registration, they're for one year. So, anything that's issued from now on will essentially allow them to grow next year should the urgency ordinance continue in place. I don't know what's going to happen. There's a lot of unknowns, given what the new Board may or may not do, and we really won't know a definitive answer until the new Board takes place and discusses the issue. If the urgency ordinance stays in place, my intent is to try to process all of these before the next growing season begins so that we have, you know, a clear date for which, you know, these registrations, you know, will expire and they're not sort of in limbo. But conceivably, there will be some that we will not have processed for one reason or another. They have the right to continue under the provisions of the urgency ordinance until we do complete the processing of their application. I would also hope that we are able to step up the enforcement and abatement procedures in a more rigorous manner as well as we move forward with the understanding which one of those, you know, do comply and are the good players versus those who, you know, have their applications denied because they weren't abiding by the rules or they didn't even bother to apply at all. But it's going to take some time, and we're still trying to work on that to make sure it functions properly. Does the Board have any other questions or comments?
I have a question in, perhaps, Megan. What happens with Measure C? Can you clarify if we have so many registered permitted grows at this point? Are those the ones that are on the taxation?
The tax is, it's been adopted, obviously, and it goes into effect January 1, 2017. A lot of things hinge on what ultimately happens with the urgency ordinance. As, under Measure C, the tax will be billed in two installments. It's similar to property taxes in that sense, where the first installment goes out, the bill goes out in May, due in June, and then the second installment would be going out in November with payment due in December. Depending on what happens with the urgency ordinance, if the urgency ordinance is still in place and has been extended, come May, the bills will be going out to all registered and pending registrants for what they are registered or pending to cultivate, based on what Measure C says. So, the campy area in which they are registered or their application is pending for would go out in May. If the urgency ordinance is not extended and there is no urgency ordinance or there is no commercial cultivation allowed within the county come May, when the first bill goes out, then there is nothing to tax, and no bill would go out.
And those that are denied are not, they're not getting a tax bill, the denials?
They are not allowed to cultivate.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? Nope. All right. So, we're going to take a lunch break now, and we'll come back at 2 o'clock. Thank you, everybody.